Welcome to today's forum featuring three Whitman candidates for one position on the Whitman Hansen Regional School Committee. Candidates on the ballot are Steve Boyce, he's a candidate for reelection, along with Randy Hill and David Forth, who are candidates for election. I'm Kevin Tocchi and I will serve as your moderator. Keeping time is the trustee, Paul Watson. So if you see the numbers on the screen, that's Paul who is operating our clock, so we thank him. Our forum is fairly simple. Opening statements, be about a minute. Then there'll be a candidate's question and answer period. Each candidate will get two minutes to answer each question. Now they can choose to, if they have a simple answer and use 60 seconds, then so be it. There's a lightning round. Lightning round is fun because we're not looking for like the answer. It could be as simple as yes or no, multiple choice, or it could be a sentence or two. Then we'll do closing statements. Now before we got all this started, before you saw us here on screen, we did draw for who would go first and what the order would be for opening, closing statements. And we will start with David Forth. You have one minute for your opening statement, David.
Thank you, Kevin. Tonight is not about my candidacy in this election. Tonight is about the future of our district, the future of our students, the visions that we have for our community. We need to hold elected officials accountable and put our future first. With that being said, Stephen Boyce and Ally Taylor have failed our district. Ally Taylor has missed almost 40% of all school committee meetings during her current term. Ally does not respond to emails or even try to acknowledge the concerns facing our district. Ally Taylor is part of the problem that has been festering in our community. Stephen Boyce was a member of Whitman's Finance Committee when the aggregate wealth model was added to the statutory method. Stephen was given paperwork explaining chapter 70 in a statutory method. There's no reason why Stephen didn't know about the statutory method and how chapter 70 is allocated. Steve Boyce also withheld class size data and per pupil expenditure information that was given to him by a local parent. Furthermore, Steve Boyce was overheard talking about the state of the school committee member Fred Small, who was advising him to withhold his information from the public.
Alright, that was David Forth with his opening statement. Up next is Randy Hill. Randy, you have one minute for your opening statement.
Hello, my name is Randy Hill. I'm running for school committee board. I'm a third generation Whitman resident. I am also a graduate of Whitman Hansen. I am running because I believe our children are being shortchanged. We are continuing to be at the bottom of the area in funding. And I believe that we need more funding to help out these children. And I will do my best to try to secure more funding. I know it's difficult and the schools are always trying to, but we need a new vision inside the committee. This committee has failed the children and we need some new eyes on these problems. Thank you very much.
Okay. Stephen Boyce, you have one minute for your opening statement.
Thank you, Kevin. Thank you, Paul, and thank you to the two new candidates. My name's Steve Boyce. I grew up here in Whitman, lived my life here. I enjoy very much being involved in anything within the town. I've been on the Whitman Town Park. As David mentioned, the Whitman Finance Committee. This is my second term on the school committee. I served over, now into my sixth decade of volunteering in Whitman. It all started way back when I was young and in school and I was very inspired by one of my teachers and I just want to continue that. I feel that I've helped out in the best vein with everything that was presented to me, everything brought to my attention. We continue to strive and to work for not only a good district, but I serve on the Plymouth Pilgrim Area Collaborative. And that's another great service that we have going for our district. Thank you.
Right. We'll start our questions. Stephen, we'll go back to you. First question. This race features two newcomers to women politics and you're one of two incumbents who are seeking reelection. Make an argument for experience versus new ideas or new individuals on the committee. You have two minutes.
Well, experience can go a long way, but certainly anything that's new and is a vision, I'm open to hearing it and I'm open to seeing people participate. We've had a strong participation of people that have either never been to a meeting, or they've come to several meetings, or they've come to all of our meetings. I just think I've known a lot of things within our schools. I do know from being a volunteer on Fridays within our schools, exactly a lot of the runnings. Yeah, no, we're not in the classroom anymore, obviously, and we have a whole new model in front of us as far as educating our children. But I was there firsthand, helping in the computer labs, learned a lot from teachers that, you know, what was their their goals and their ideas for their particular students, even worked with bringing programs such as, you know, Excel learning and not just computers without technology, but Excel learning. One student and several others, where I came up with a model of how they could actually learn more about math and study more and get more deeper into things than just the basics. We actually did some binary work, counting in binary and thinking like a computer. And I think it really helped solidify for those that maybe we didn't have at the time an advanced placement for these children, but it really helped them move along. And I always know that the work I've done in our computer labs, every Friday in the years that I spent at our different schools, certainly those students have walked away with a tremendous amount of knowledge. I see them today, they're buying houses, they're getting married. There's proof right there that we've had very excellent students and students that went on with great education and great careers.
Okay. David, same question. Again, you get two incumbents, two newcomers. Make an argument for new blood versus experience or someone who's been on the board for a while.
Sure. The first thing I want to talk about is these school committee members who have been serving multiple terms had no clue how chapter 70 was allocated. Nobody knew about the statutory method, the state's default method. Even last year, we were about to lose over 40 jobs. A parent had to come in and really see there was a revenue issue in our town. And if it wasn't for her, we would have lost over 40 jobs. We lost 19, which is still a lot. But the school committee sat here and said, oh, I'm sorry, it's a financial issue, it's a revenue issue, but that's not the case at all. It's how we're allocating our funds. These school committee members keep putting our students' issues on the back burner. There's no reason why we shouldn't have full day kindergarten when almost 90% of the state already has it. Enrollment is one of our biggest issues and yet we're not looking for new solutions and new ideas to invest in our community and to get people to want to move in. Even yesterday, Don Byers at school committee recommended a workshop and it was voted down. The workshop's completely free. It would have given us new ideas, new solutions, new goals on how we can help the district and help students. And the school committee wasn't for it. And I'm just sick of seeing this type of decision making. The school committee has no backbone. They don't care about their students and we need leadership. I will leave us and I will be there for them.
Good. Thank you, David. Randy, same question. Talk to me about, you have two incumbents. Talk to me about experience versus new blood, new ideas.
Well, the new ideas, we definitely need them. As David said, the chapter 70 funding that in the statutory method, that has been going on for 20 years now. And to not know how the school is funded is unacceptable if you're in the school committee, or to agree to terms where one town is picking up most of the burden. It's just unacceptable at these times. We need to, we need some new eyes on these problems as to get us through these challenging times as the two towns decide how they're going to come up with the funding for the school. And I'm tired of the school always getting the short end of the stick. When it comes time for towns to do their budgets, it's always cut to schools, cut to schools. And now due to a failure in the both selectmen and frankly, the school committee, we're looking at a 1/12 budget, which will, I think we'll lose probably 35 jobs if we go to a 1/12 budget. And that's just unacceptable for our children. We can do better. We need to do better.
Okay.
Alright, so Dave, we're gonna stay with you, Randy. You get the next, the first crack at this question. There is an ongoing struggle regarding the method that decides the annual assessments, per pupil versus statutory to the two towns in the district. Explain your understanding as to how the process got to this point and what steps need to be taken to retain the educational partnership between Whitman and Hansen. You have two minutes.
Well, how we got here, apparently no one knows. And it's very tough to get answers from leadership anywhere. And what we do to get out of it for the schools is we need to go with a compromise. There has been talk of a compromise between the two towns and that compromise will benefit the schools. It will bring on, I believe, five new positions. But that's the compromise and I, from what I'm hearing is no one wants, is there will be no agreement on a compromise. Both towns seem pretty dug in and now that it, once again, it's the schools who are gonna have to pay.
I'm gonna ask you a quick follow-up question. This will be for everybody else as well. Do you feel that maybe the state needs to step in?
Um, yes, I think they will need to step in. I think, I don't know. From what I'm hearing, it's not too promising that there will be a compromise. I am for the compromise because once again, I said it will add five new positions. But it's not looking that way and yes, maybe the, it is time for the state to step in.
Okay. Alright, Stephen, same question. Talk to me about the ongoing struggle regarding the methodology for the annual assessments.
Sure, Kevin. So, you know, I hear this, I knew back in 2007. What I knew in 2007 as a finance committee member and what any finance committee member before me, after me does is they're a citizen at large group and they're a recommending body. Dr. McEwen in the school committee in 2007 could have came with me, class size, anything else. But they still went by the agreed method. That's what was in place. That agreed method was not anything done to it, nothing. And we knew it was a 60-40 split. Back then, we'd see a swing in the pendulum. Sometimes we'd get hit harder. In Whitman, sometimes Hanson would get hit hotter. And because we were still growing in populations, there really was in a sense that something was drastically wrong, but it wasn't that any statutory method would have helped us. If you introduced it to Hanson back then and today they would say, hey, we're paying a million dollars more. The same argument could go on. I'm very strong, I agree with Randy. We've got a good compromise out there. I think that both Whitman and Hansen, I've heard people say that, you know, Hanson will bring forward, you know, when it comes to education, they'll bring forward their best game. We're a region, we're a district. That's how we, that's how we operate. That's how we serve. And we serve across the board for all of our students. I mentioned being on the Pilgrim Area Collaborative. I'll join the South Shore Education Collaborative next. And that's representative so that our schools have the best for those students that are in need. Thank you.
So my follow-up, as I asked Randy, do you think there's gonna be a point where the state's gonna have to step in, where both sides are dug in?
Well, I don't know if the state will have to step in on that. They're stepping in through the Department of Education right now, as of July 1st, with a 1/12 budget. We just need to get to town meeting. We need to vote our budgets. We need to vote our amendment. And we just need to say, here's what we got. Here it is. We presented it and had that budget out there for a long, long time. Whether it was agreed on by all of our committee members, that's another, that's another story. But I think, I think we'll be fine. I don't think we'll need to go deep state so much in involvement and so forth.
Okay. David, same question. Talk to me about the ongoing struggle regarding the methodology of the annual assessments per pupil, statutory between the two towns. Give your understanding of it and steps that need to be taken to maintain this relationship between the two communities.
Sure. So basically in 1991, we regionalized K through 12. And then in 1993, the Education Reform Act was passed, which created the statutory method. The statutory method is the state default method. So therefore, if we're not voting on an alternative method, that is the method we should be using. However, we vote for an alternative method, it has to pass unanimously in that school committee. So by not voting for it, or by not voting unanimously, or not voting for which method to use, you're not following the law. And we weren't doing that. And it's crazy because you go to Rockland, you go to surrounding towns, they have statutory, their school committee knew about it, their finance committee knew about it. And '07, the finance committees went to the state and the state handed out paperwork that explained the aggregate wealth model added to the statutory method. There's no reason why anyone in the finance committee, anyone in the school committee didn't know about it. It's disappointing. It's not a Hanson issue, it's a Whitman, it's not a Whitman issue, it's a district issue. Elected officials from both sides failed you. How could you be funding VOTEC using the statutory method but not Whitman Hansen and not question why? It's a joke. And Mr. Boyce says that it's a pendulum. It's going back and forth between Whitman and Hanson. That's not the case one bit. Whitman has been suffering for too long. If this was taken care of years ago, this wouldn't be a million dollar gap. This would be a minimal gap that no one would have even noticed. But we put it on the back burner, we ignored it, we don't prioritize our education, and now we're in a disaster. And it's because of Steve Boyce, because of Ally Taylor, and members of the school committee who have continued to fail us. Thank you.
So my follow-up question is, I asked both Randy and Stephen, do you think it's gonna, it's gonna reach a point where the state's gonna have to step in and with the situation?
The issue's really polarized right now. I hope the state doesn't step in, but it's possible. I think the state might. And if the state does step in, it's going to require both towns to make sure they're paying a fair amount above their minimum level contribution, which they haven't been.
Alright, so we go back to you, David. David, you get the first question on this one. Knowing that there is so much angst regarding the school budget, there's a sizable deficit on the Hanson side of the fence, that there were conversations about trying to do a slow change to statutory. What do you, what do you feel in regards to, are you a proponent of a shared school district, or would you ever support an effort to deregionalize? You have two minutes.
I will never, ever, at any point, ever support deregization. The whole entire argument for deregization is to save money. But by deregalizing, you're not saving money. You have to get a new administration, a new athletics director. You have to get possibly a new high school, more new school buildings. What are we gonna do? We're gonna have to hire more staff. It doesn't make sense at all. So I will not support deregization. A phase in, I am open to a phase in. I guess, you know, Hanson wasn't prepared for this. This isn't Hanson's fault. This isn't Whitman's fault. It's our elected officials' fault for not doing their job. So we don't want to blame the taxpayers of Hanson, the students of Hanson by punishing them, by forcing statutory on them. So I am open to a phase in, but I do believe for the long-term sustainability of our district and our schools, we need to move to a full statutory method at some point because what's happening is not sustainable. If some, if one town votes against statutory and another town votes for it, we're gonna have statutory. So every year, it's gonna be an argument over methodology. Methodology should not be our argument. It should be curriculum. It should be our students' needs. It should be mental health. Methodology should not be the issue. We need to move the statutory, just like almost every other district is doing. And we need to do it for the benefit of not just Whitman, not just Hanson, but for our community and for our students and for our future. Thank you.
So I'm gonna follow that up, David, and ask you this. What if it is, what if it is out of Whitman's control? What if you have enough angered residents in Hanson who want to form a committee and who want to pull out of the regional agreement? Is it, do you feel that it, that it's gotten to the point where fences, that the fences can still be mended? And, or do you feel that there's too many stubborn people who are involved in the conversation to try to save this?
No, I think our partnership can be fixed. I think we can have a greater, greater partnership than we've had before. I get there's a lot of mossy going on, but a lot of it derives from the ignorance of our elected officials. It's not Whitman hating Hanson or Hanson hating Whitman. So I believe we can work together. I believe we can work past this because we have the same goals. We want what's best for our community. We want what's best for our students, for our district. So with that in mind, I believe we will end up working together because if we deregalize, Hanson's not gonna get any more state aid. You know, they're not gonna benefit in the long term and neither is Whitman. So why are we gonna hurt each other? Because of an argument? It makes no sense. It's petulant behavior. We're gonna move past it. We're gonna work on our partnership and we're gonna have a great district.
Very good. Alright, Randy, you are up. Next, same question. I can repeat the question if you want me to.
Yes.
And so the, basically, the question is, we know that there's plenty of angst regarding the school budget, the seismic deficit that Hanson is facing. We know that they're gonna be going for an $800,000 override, that there were discussions about trying to have a gradual transition to the statutory method, but those conversations have broken off. Would you be a proponent of, would you, are you still a proponent of a shared school district, or would you offer an effort to deregionalize? You have two minutes.
Oh, I believe in sharing the school district. I do not want it to regionalize. Very important that we keep these communities together. And we've done so for over 100 years now and it's no time to, to break it up.
Okay. Do you have any more on that, or is that it?
No, that, that's it.
Okay, so then my follow-up would be, what if it is out of the control of Whitman, the residents and any, any elected or appointed official in Whitman, and that Hanson is to the point of no return in regards to wanting to move towards deregionalization? Do you feel that, do you feel that this still, that this regional school district can still be saved?
Oh, yes. I believe it can be saved. And it really has to be saved by the, starting in the school committee because we're the Whitman Hansen School Committee, not Whitman, not Hanson, Whitman Hansen. I believe Hanson has some very, very tough decisions to make. If they choose to break off, then I just don't see how they, how would it. Right now Hanson's only about 4% above the minimum spending and they say they don't have any money now. So I really don't see them breaking away from the school district.
Very good. Steve, same question. Do you need me to repeat it?
No, I can, I can tell you, we're a great district. We're gonna continue to be a great district. I can agree with Randy on a lot of what he said. Going forward, you know, Hanson will make their own choices, Whitman will make their own choices, but I think for the better good, we'll all stay together. There is, there is nothing wrong with that. So I don't have any further like doubts or any other thoughts. I've always wanted to keep us together. I volunteered in the Whitman Hansen Regional Schools. I served for the Whitman Hansen Regional Schools through the town of Whitman. And that's what I want to continue to do.
But as I asked both David and Randy, I'll ask you the same question. What if this is out of the control of any Whitman resident, any elected or appointed Whitman official, and that you have a movement in Hanson to deregionalize and want to do their own thing? Is it, do you feel that it's at the point of no return?
I don't. I don't. We've got some very good people who serve on the school committee that are from Hanson. We've got those like Mr. Howard, very mindful. He has a lot of respect and he brings a lot of talent and information to all of our meetings. Mr. Scriven, who heads up the AAC, which is our Regional Agreement Amendment Committee. I don't see it, Kevin. It's not there. We're gonna stay a district. We're gonna get stronger. Yeah. We haven't had the best of opportunities, but let's not, not forget how regional school districts have not been given money like individual schools, districts have, individual town schools have. And that's, that's a big thing. The money should still be of the same proportion percentage-wise. And for the last 10 years, one of, one of my colleagues measured that out and it's just gone down and down. And it's, it's a significant difference in percentage.
Okay. Stephen, we're staying with you because you're gonna get the first question this time around. The purpose why we are doing this Zoom forum is because as candidates, you can't necessarily get out there and mingle and gather with the voters. COVID-19 is very real. It's something that I don't think anybody saw coming. And we're all finding new ways to be able to deal with it, whether it's social distancing and the new normal. But it also, not only besides affecting us, it has also changed and affected the day-to-day lives of students in the district. What are your concerns heading into the new school year, knowing that there could be a drastic change or changes to providing an education while preventing the spread of coronavirus? There's also an anticipated second wave that many health officials are concerned with that we could see in the fall. Give me your thoughts. You have two minutes.
I'm very, I'm very concerned, Kevin. You know, I'm very pleased to hear from the superintendent last night how well, and of course, other nights, but ending our school year this past Monday, how well, really, the remote learning went. Our teachers do a fabulous job and they can, will continue to do that if we ended up remote learning. I mentioned Plymouth Area Collaborative. And again, tonight, we had a meeting and we talked about what the fall could possibly look like. I'm very concerned that if we do go back into our schools too soon, that's, we could also be hit with that second wave. And that second wave is very true. It's, it's very much been out there. And I would be very cautious entering the schools, doing anything, but still be very mindful of what we need to accomplish, be it more, you know, one-on-one learning or whatever it would take and making sure it gets done. But the remote learning has been very successful this year. And I'm very pleased and happy and appreciative of everything that's gone on.
Alright, so David, same question to you. COVID-19, give me your thoughts in regards to how it's, how it's affected the students in the district. What are your concerns as far as the new school year, the 2020, 2021 school year, and how it's gonna affect educating our students?
Sure. So basically, you know, I walked around town, I've spoke with young people still in school about our remote learning. They've told me the complete opposite from what Mr. Boyce is saying. They've told me it's failed them. They haven't really learned anything. It hasn't reiterated subject mastery. It's just really been an overall disappointment. That's a failure of the district. No one could have anticipated this. However, what we need to do is invest more in remote learning, figure out, you know, effective plans that will help us deal with COVID if we do need to have remote learning. We need to figure out how to deal with class sizes. We need plans for teachers so they can safely teach young kids on, you know, the importance of pandemic and sanitation and staying healthy. We gotta make sure our kids know the importance of keeping their mask on. Basically, what we need to do is we need to make sure that teachers are aware, the students are aware, staff, the administration are aware of a concrete plan on how we can reduce COVID. And if there's a student experience, experiencing symptoms of COVID, then we need to figure out how to handle that without, you know, putting other students and administration officials' lives at risk. So basically, to answer your question, in order to benefit and to work with COVID, we need to make sure our students are safe. We need to make sure we have a great technology plan. We need to make sure we have funding for proper sanitation. And overall, we just need to have concrete goals going into this because chances are, we're gonna have a second wave. And we need to know what we're gonna do to reduce the severity of loss of education towards these students.
Thank you, David. Randy, same question.
Yes, I agree with David. I don't think the remote learning went so well this first time around. I, I believe we need a I, I believe we need to invest in remote learning. I think it's, could be the way of the future. But that way, if kids are homesick, they don't fall behind and they can keep up with their classes. So it is very smart to invest in remote learning. Because like I said, I think the teachers did the best they could this time around. I mean, but we need to implement a program in the school where, where the teachers are prepared for it. So if it happens again, then they're off and running. And I believe the second wave could happen. And I'd like to see a real good conversation on how we're going to reopen schools. If we're going to do, oh, you know, a day on, day off or a week on, week off. I mean, we got to get these issues, we got to tackle them right away.
Okay. Randy, we're going to stay with you for the next question. Uh, the question I'm about to pose to the, the three of you, uh, i- i- is something that, that has come from residents. I've heard over and over and over from residents over the years as a reporter, as somebody who has covered meetings, whether it's school committee meetings, whether it's town meeting, um, the process in which the school district's annual spending plan is put forth or being able to view it is something that a lot of folks feel there's a difficulty to it. It's not like when you go to town meeting that, you know, you could see all 400 line items, whether you have it in a pamphlet that you're handed when you come to the door or when you're sitting there, you could shout out a number in order to say, uh, I don't agree with 25. And you can get up and expound upon that. How important is it when it comes to transparency? When it comes to the school committee and its annual budget in regards to, uh, better educating and informing the residents? You have two minutes.
Oh, it is extremely important. I believe it needs to be streamlined and broken down to basic categories. Just like you said, there's 40 line items and you know, the citizens are going to look at that and say, wow, this is all the money that we're giving them? And it's, it's too much. We need to just streamline it and break it down so citizens can read it and comprehend it real easily.
Okay. Uh, Stephen, same question. Give me your thoughts in regards to, uh, citizens' concerns about transparency when it comes to the annual school budget and comprehending it.
Well, we, we've had a new system for quite a while now. It's called Munis and it's helped us a lot. Um, I would certainly hope it is a tool that's able to be viewed online, uh, through our website. I don't know how updated right now. I didn't, have not looked recently because I get those reports more directly. But that might help to keep the transparency out there. And the transparency should always be there. I think we do very good at, at getting as much information as we can onto our website. And I hope that we, we continue in that same vein. Uh, we do need to bring more, uh, forward to people so that they have the information. No, it doesn't post on a warrant or what she with the warrant. Um, it may be if that's something that it has to be at some point, but it is one line item that is wrote it and that, that's, um, that's through the town bylaws, I believe that, um, it's only one line item. Um, that's how it was set up originally. Um, but there's always ways to improve upon that.
Same question, David. Give me your, your take on the annual school budget, um, its transparency uh, in regards to better informing residents as to where their tax dollars are being spent when it comes to education in the district.
So I basically, I think we should have website reform. I think we should redo the whole entire school committee website. Make sure it's something separate from WHRSD.org. And when we do this one separate line item, uh, we should have a school committee member, whether it's Chair Hayes or someone from the administration, um, elaborate on what is going on in this budget and break it down because it's, it's, it's a necess- a necessity for the public considering what has happened regarding the statutory method. And I can't help but think that if we had, uh, a better, more transparency regarding our school's financial situation, that we could have caught on to this much sooner before it got as bad as it has. So I want website reform. I want, um, our finances, anything regarding school committee to be there, to be transparent, easy to find, uh, whether it's quick links or tabs, whatever it may be. But the way, uh, the website works right now, it's not transparent. It's very confusing for people who aren't necessarily tech savvy. So I do think we need, um, reform regarding the website.
We'll stay with you, David. You get the, the first question, uh, and you get to answer this question first amongst the three of you. Uh, you know, sitting on a committee and making, uh, making financial decisions, sometimes you're going to make a tough, you have to make a tough choice. Um, especially if you're weighing things like class sizes, retaining teachers, cutting programs. Which one of the options do you favor as a temporary cost-cutting measure if you needed to and why?
Um, right now going into COVID if we need to cut anything or just in general?
I, I think just in general, I mean, a philosophy. If, if you were given the choice as, as a, um, a, a member, a voting member of the school committee and it's like, we need to cut, you know, both of our communities do not have the somewhat sufficient amount of funds and we're going to need to trim $200,000 from the budget. Again, I'm just giving you a, a fictitious, a fict- uh, 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 an example. What would you go with? Would you, would you, would you be okay with class sizes increasing? Retaining, you know, uh, retaining teachers or, or cutting programs? I mean, what would you look to do?
Just the two things I look to immediately is I look over at athletics and see what we're doing regarding that. But another thing is I'd look at class sizes, for example, they're terrible at the ball at the elementary level. So if we had to cut anywhere, I would look to areas that have low class sizes, um, that by cutting these class sizes, we're not causing a major issue in the classroom. Because for example, I think low class sizes are essential at the elementary level, but perhaps we have more leeway at the high school level if it needs to happen. You know, I think 25 to one, uh, which is a huge class size is, um, you know, a lot better than half the high school than the elementary level. Um, so that's kind of where I'd look. But if it really came down to it, I would prefer not to obviously cut any of that. But I would look to ways we can most effectively cut things while also not taking away from children's education.
Very good. Uh, Randy, same question. If you, if, you know, you were in a juxtaposition of neither town could afford the assessment and there had to be cuts, say $200,000, $300,000 need to be trimmed from the fiscal 2021 budget. And you had to decide whether, you know, uh, on class sizes, uh, teacher retention or cutting programs. What would, what would, what option would you favor, um, as a, a temporary cost-cutting measure and why?
Well, I'd look at cutting busing. I would actually look at cutting, I know the busing contract is coming up and I would look at reworking that right now. I mean, that, that's a way we could save money. I know it's, so by cutting the busing and maybe even getting rid of it altogether, we could save a lot of money that could go to other programs.
Very good. Steve, same question. Uh, you know, if you're given a, a scenario where neither town uh, has the fiscal wherewithal to be able to give the annual assessment that is put forth by the school committee, you're asked that you have to cut a certain amount of money. Uh, what would be, what would be your, uh, your philosophy in regards to uh, temporary cost-cutting measures, whether it's cutting teachers, increasing class sizes or even cutting programs?
I, I don't agree with the cutting programs. I, I don't want to get rid of teachers. I can go with the busing thing. I, I wouldn't, we'd need to do a full survey to see who is actually bringing their children to school and picking them up and so forth. Because there are a lot of cars. At the time I was at Indian Head, there was always a lot of cars dropping children off, uh, students and so forth. Um, and I'm sure that's even, um, a big thing at the high school with getting dropped off instead of taking the bus. And the middle schools, I, I live down near the Whitman Middle School and see a lot of, a, a lot more vehicles, um, in with the bus traffic. Uh, so that can be a big thing. And, and, and even getting more competition in those kind of contracts. There's not a lot out there, um, that offers us that opportunity to, to look and, um, discuss and, and to have more mindful ideas. Um, maybe even, uh, it was suggested last night that we own our own buses. Uh, Social Botec does that. Uh, they could service them for us if, if we were able to be more affordable with that. At least for those that would still need the buses because there are still needs. Um, as far as class sizes though, I, I wonder if, and, and it would be a, probably a strong um, argument to do more, um, more classes, not so much with just more students, but maybe more in a college setting atmosphere where you do have the more students and they take on more. And I'm sure, I know there's a lot of AP classes that we offer and so forth, but that would be another thing that could probably help us temporarily or, or maybe even, uh, to get us, um, going with, with 21st, uh, century technology.
Can you say that a, a part of me wants to let David weigh in on the, on the, uh, on the busing? Because my, actually my next question was going to be talking about non-mandated busing when it comes to the town of Whitman. I don't know if you gentlemen want to expand upon that, on that? Or give David a chance to kind of weigh in for 30 seconds about, about non-mandated busing? It's up to you. It could be a general question that you all answer. But I kind of think that Randy and Stephen already kind of touched upon it because it seems as though they, they're not fans of it. What, what's the, what's the flavor?
Give David the opportunity, absolutely.
David, would you like 30 seconds to talk about non, non-mandated, mandated busing?
Yeah, I would love it. Uh, thank you, Stephen and Randy for talking about non-mandated busing. I think it's a great idea. Um, if we can make cuts there, I think that's essential. The only reason I didn't talk about before is because usually that's something selectmen and the town take care of regarding their contracts. But yes, I believe that we could reduce non-mandated men, non-mandated busing by moving it to, you know, a mile and a half or two mile radius and save a significant amount of money. I think we should do that because like, uh, Stephen and Randy are saying, uh, there's a lot of parents who bring their kids to school, they bring their kids to high school, middle school, the elementary school. Um, so we're basically paying for empty seats on the bus, which is a waste of money. So that's how I feel about that.
Okay. And you both, Stephen and Randy, you both all set with your answers on, on, okay. Just want to make sure that there's, there's a fairness here and everybody gets to weigh in. Because I guess that both Randy and, and Stephen mentioned it, so I want to give, uh, David an opportunity. Uh, let's talk about Whitman possibly being in line to replace its middle school thanks to some financial assistance from the, the MSBA. We all know that's the Massachusetts School Building Authority. Um, what do you know about this project? Are you for it? Are you against it, uh, knowing that Whitman is having its own fiscal issues? Uh, we will start with Steve.
I'm for it. I walked through that school a number of times, uh, with the superintendent, uh, facilities manager. Um, the rest of our team on, on the school committee. It, it does need a lot of work. It probably wasn't built with the best that it could have been. Um, I attended that school, uh, shortly after it, it opened. Um, it was a, a very decent school, a very decent building, but there, there's just been too many things plaguing it. We've already, um, if you want to talk about, um, lost spending and so forth, we've already spent enough money on that uh, to probably have put down a, a sizable amount or set aside a sizable amount and just the things that have failed there. Uh, one of the things though i- is that obviously you need a site and so forth. Um, there's a lot that's been done with those fields and I really wouldn't want to touch those and it, that's wet ground back there. We still have the Park Ave school site, which is just a beautiful piece of property. Yeah, would limit us in fields and so forth. But if you think creatively, you're making something, that could be an excellent spot. Um, it's just very beautiful. It's a nice carved out corner. It was one of the brick schools built in the early 60s. Um, and, and it did last its time. Right now it's not, um, obviously online or, or really that usable. And we had rented it out at the end of, um, I don't know, the 2000s, I want to say, uh, to Kennedy Donovan. So, but using that site would be, I think, ideal. Maybe keep us from having the additional costs of tearing down a building, relocating kids and then building a new building right on the same site where the, uh, middle school is. Thank you.
Thank you, Stephen. David, uh, give me your thoughts on a, a new middle school. Are you for this? What do you know about the project? Are you for or against it? Uh, even though the town is, um, struggling financially? You have two minutes.
So I toured the middle school in January, uh, unrelated to this, just to visit. And one of the first things I noticed was how small the hallways are and how old the building looked. Um, it's definitely way past its time. And, you know, I'm very nostalgic when it comes to the building because I love Whitman Middle and I love that middle school very much, but it does need to be torn down. Um, I did talk to some selectmen about it. Basically what I was told is that the state comes in and usually they do a couple of visits to determine if, uh, the building needs to be torn down or if it can be refurbished and whatnot. Uh, usually it takes about two or three visits before they make a determination. I was told they came in on their first visit, the state came in and said, this building needs to be torn down. It's not suitable for students and we need a new, a new middle school. So basically the state's coming in and saying it needs to be done. And if the state's saying it, you know, I, I agree, I'm on board with it. If, if they're willing to help, uh, provide us with aid or reimbursement so we can cover this, um, absolutely. And another thing to note is we're almost done paying off the high school right now. Um, so by the time we start actually making payments towards the new middle school, we should be done making payments to the high school. So we'll be able to kind of, you know, replace the two in theory.
Very good. Thank you, David. Randy, uh, same question to you, uh, a new Whitman middle school, your thoughts?
Oh, yes, I'm totally for a new middle school. And I agree with David. Once the, we're done paying for the high school and we start paying for the middle school, then we shouldn't fail it too much. But yeah, I, the, the middle school needs to be torn down. I, I would use the land that's already there. There seems to be a lot of land over there that we could build upon. And, um, and if the state's willing to subsidize a, a good amount of it, then I think we should go for it.
Randy, we're going to stay with you for this next question to start. Um, let, let's talk a little bit, you know, we've talked a lot about, about the financial side of, of some of the committee's tasks and some of the, the problems and the issues. Uh, let's really jump into it, at the educational side of things. Uh, what would you like to see school superintendent Jeff Simonak and his team focus on uh, when it comes to, uh, education and improving the curriculum for, for students on, uh, in all grades? You have one, you have two minutes.
Well, I'd like to see, um, more technology, more investment in the technology in, in all grades. And everyone, every, pretty much every household has a computer and that's the way the workforce is heading towards. And I believe the earlier we start on technology training, the better.
Steve, same question. Give me your thoughts on, uh, the school superintendent Jeff Simonak and his team in regards to, uh, the team's focus when it comes to education, whether it's, you know, the grade one or grade 12.
Yeah, I, I can agree with Randy. We need a, a comprehensive redo of, uh, technology. Um, I was in 2000 when it was all brand new and was there also on the school committee when we went, um, with virtual, the, the dummy machines. But, um, you know, we moved into a, a mobile world and a mobile capacity. Um, computer labs could probably sit empty now. Um, yeah, there may be some uses for them, but there's a lot that we can expand upon with that. Um, it would be ideal to see that. And I know that we'll be working next on the, uh, strategic plan uh, for the next few years. And that should bring us forward with that, that commitment to the technology, the, uh, the commitment to, uh, giving, uh, students that world-class, getting back to that world-class, um, education that we all desire and all want to learn from. Um, those two things can go hand in hand and it would be ideal to have them both.
Thank you, Stephen. David, same question. Uh, what would you like to see, uh, the school superintendent and his, uh, his team focus on when it comes to, uh, educating, uh, our, our future?
So I think, uh, Jeff Simonak needs to prioritize enrollment above all else. So by prioritizing enrollment, um, that means having full day kindergarten for all students because it's about time that anyone who's going into kindergarten gets full day kindergarten for free instead of paying $3,000. Uh, we need more technology. Uh, we are fortunate to have one-to-one ratios at the elementary school, but it's two to one at the middle school and there's only 300 Chromebooks for 1,100 students at, at the high school. Um, I believe we should create a student-led tech team that's completely free of cost that will teach students how to troubleshoot, how to repair, how to maintenance Chromebooks. It'll reduce technology costs for us. Uh, we need a technology plan like Stephen and Randy are saying. Um, it's 21st century, we need to get with the program and we need to, you know, start prioritizing kids and their careers. kids and their careers. I believe we need to put more funding into special ed, because we're spending so much money transporting kids out of district for things that we can take care of them here for if we put the funding towards it. And overall, by funding special ed and getting kids to come back in district, we're going to be increasing enrollment. Not only that, but students from other districts, instead of staying where they are, they'll be coming to us, because we're able to provide them with a better education than surrounding towns. So I think technology, enrollment, full-day K, we need better curriculum. I went, again, like I said before, I went to the middle school in January, I spoke to a couple of old teachers, some of the science books we're still using, they're from the 90s. They're from, that's older than me, you know, I get them young, but that's ridiculous. We need more modern curriculum. We need to catch up, we're behind. We are one, our towns don't fund our schools. We're putting, I think, $7,000, a little bit under $6,800, that's far below anyone else around town is paying. So it's ridiculous.
All right, we have one final question and answer period question, and David, you, we return to you. This is kind of a taster's choice here, a school district-related issue that we haven't discussed here, but you may want to take a minute or two to kind of discuss. You have two minutes.
I think what's important to talk about is just how bad our district is compared to other districts. We perform very well, our teachers are amazing, our students are so intelligent, but we do not provide them with the tools to succeed. Like I said, last year, the school committee said, we don't have the funding for it, we don't have the revenue, how can we get the revenue? Well, a parent came in and said, here's the revenue, and they were ready to vote and get rid of 40 jobs, over 40 jobs. I'm sick of students having to come in, I'm sick of parents having to come in to do the school committee's job. So I think it's time we provide students with the tools they need to succeed, teachers with the tools they need to succeed, and we move forward. I talked, last year as a senior, I toured the elementary school, middle school, high school, I spoke with teachers in both towns, they told me they had to create their own curriculum, that they were Googling lesson plans the night before to teach students, because they don't have a curriculum director in their area, or they didn't at the time. That's ridiculous. And the fact that they do it, and they do it so phenomenally, and they get it done, is amazing, but they shouldn't have to do that. So we need to help our teachers, we need to help our students, and we need to actually prioritize our schools. People say that we have been doing it, but we're not. And people say the revenue's not there, but it is. I mean, when you have record-low unemployment, you have unprecedented economic growth, why aren't you accessing the full amount of revenue on your levy? It's ridiculous, and why aren't school committee members looking into it? We should be looking into solutions, innovative ideas to make our district better. Like I said before, Don Byers last night proposed a free workshop to help our school committee improve our new ideas, be able to gain tools that will help benefit our district, and that school committee voted it down, something completely free, something that will only benefit us, and I think that's ridiculous. It's so disappointing, and we need a school committee with a backbone, we need a school committee that's actually going to fight for students, and we need someone who's not going to put the students' need on the back burner. You need to vote for leadership, please vote for me.
Great, thank you, David. Randy, a school district issue or a school-related issue that we haven't discussed, but you want to take two minutes of your time to touch upon, you have two minutes.
Okay, well, I am for all-day kindergarten. I believe we're the only district out of all the towns and probably the whole state that do not have all-day kindergarten. That's a very important issue that I want to take up. Also, I believe in our, you were discussing the busing contract, I would also like to see a later start time for, especially the high school students. Maybe push them back to 8 o'clock or 8:30, not 7:05, it's not working. I feel that kids will learn better with a later start time. Also, I'd like to see more funding into Chromebooks. Like David mentioned, we only have 300 in the high school for 1,100 students. That's just unacceptable.
No, no, you still have another minute, anything else?
Oh, okay. Yes, and also, we need to look at the class sizes for Duval. Duval's school is now at roughly 25 students per class, and average for every other grade is 20. So we need to get teachers over at Duval, and that goes back to the compromised budget that I am for, the compromised budget, because that will provide more teachers to Duval.
Thank you. You got it, Randy. Steve, same question, well, actually, same offer. School district or school-related issue that maybe we haven't discussed here, but needs a moment or two to be discussed, you have two minutes.
Sure. I think I gave this to you in a 1-on-1. I'd like to see more collaboration between the grades. There were times back when, you know, fourth and fifth grade could exchange up and so forth. Maybe this is going to build a stronger cohesiveness of lessons and learning. And David says, you know, teachers shouldn't have to get their own curriculum. Yeah, curriculum directors unfortunately are not around. So let's use something, let's use the technology in with maybe collaborating with grades, exchanging ideas. Could you imagine some of these students, like we did up, and I know everyone's aware of this, when we moved the pre-K up to the high school, and now we've introduced, at times, that ability to kind of cross-sex those and let them learn from each other? Because you're developing role models, you're making it a much more stronger bond within the grades, and you're making it a much more stronger school in a whole school system. Thank you.
Gentlemen, that concludes our Q and A session. It's now on to the lightning round. I can bore out of it than I need to, but again, it's, I'll tell you exactly what I'm seeking for an answer, whether it's a yes or no. If you feel that you need to give a sentence or two, I'd like to give a sentence or two, but try to stick within the groundwork that we're given here. We'll start off with Randy. Are you in favor of school choice, yes or no?
Yes.
Steve, same question, are you in favor of school choice?
Limited. I would not go further than that, very limited.
David?
Yes.
Do you attend town meeting on a regular basis? Yes or no? David?
Can I say a sentence or two with that?
You can.
I just started attending town hall last year, town meeting during my senior year, but I have been since then.
Very good. Randy, same question.
Yes, I always attend.
Steve?
Yes.
Should a person have prior municipal experience before sitting on a school committee? Randy?
No.
Steve, should a person have prior municipal experience before sitting on a school committee?
No.
David?
No.
Okay, no, all right. And here's the final one, this one's kind of more of a fun one. First place that you plan to visit or have visited since we've all been quarantined? David?
Once I can go back to visit, I'm going to go over to the high school and enjoy an in-person school committee meeting.
Randy, same question.
A beach.
Very good.
Miss the beach.
Any specific beach or just a beach?
Anyone will do at this point, like White Horse.
Okay. And same with you, Steve?
Canada.
Huh?
Canada.
Canada?
That's where my grandparents are from.
Okay, all right. All right, time for closing statements. You'll have one minute in which to do so, and the way we have the order right now, I believe Mr. Boyce, you have one minute for your closing statement.
Well, thank you, Kevin and Paul and WHCA for putting this on, and also for Randy and David being here. You know, you learn as well as you continue to grow, and we're always on a learning curve. I really enjoy all my time that I serve with the town of Whitman, no matter what I'm on. Once again, Friends of the Park, I'm currently the president of the Cobook Cemetery Association Board of Trustees, and this will become my third term if the citizens so elect me and on the school committee. I do enjoy very much, because of my time going back to working with kids with Down Syndrome, that, working with the collaborators that we have, and I'm looking forward to the social, educational collaborative and an opportunity to serve on that. But thank you all, do come out and vote, and I do thank the two gentlemen that are here, again.
Very good. That was Mr. Stephen Boyce. Randy, you have one minute for your closing statement, sir.
Thank you, Kevin, Stephen, and David. It's been a great hour or so. I am running for, to get all-day kindergarten. I think it's very, very important. We should not be the only district that does not provide it. Also, I'm looking for start times to be pushed back for the high school. That is very, very important also. The new middle school, like, we've already discussed it, the current one should be torn down, and we need to get the new one. The children are the most important thing. We have to provide them every opportunity to succeed, every opportunity. Thank you very much.
Randy Hill with his closing statement, and then finally, David Forth, you have one minute for your closing statement, sir.
Kevin and Paul, thank you for taking the time to host this forum. Randy and Steve, thank you guys for being here, I really appreciate this discussion, I thought it was great. It's great hearing your guys' views, it's great that we have stuff like this for public transparency. On that note, I do want to talk about Ally Taylor not being here tonight. Once again, Ally Taylor is not attending another event for the school committee, and it shows just how uninvolved she is. So I do ask anyone who's watching this debate, please do not vote for her. Please consider the candidates who have actually taken the time to show up. With that being said, if you're looking for leadership, I understand I'm young, I will be that guy. I know how to talk to the students, I can talk with parents, because we have the same goals, we want what's best for the students. I was just in the schools, I know what's going on. If you want someone who's going to prioritize student-oriented pragmatic policy, then please vote for me. If you want someone who's going to stop putting the students' needs on the back burner, start prioritizing and fighting every single day for our district, for our community, for our parents, for our students, please vote for me. Thank you.
Thank you. That was David Forth with his closing statement. And again, the idea of this Zoom forum that we had is because we are, we are all dealing with COVID-19, yeah, we're slowly seeing the state open up, but this was the best way to get, let all the candidates have an opportunity to talk with you and to give a better idea as to where they stand on a lot of the key issues for school committees, the regional school committee, the school district itself. Today's forum did feature Whitman candidates who are running for two positions on the Whitman Hanson Regional School Committee. A thank you to the candidates for participating and helping to better inform the residents before they vote on Saturday, June 27th. Remember, polls open in Whitman at the town hall at 9:00 AM for Paul Watson, who did tremendous job timekeeping, and the rest of the WHCA production team. I'm Kevin Tocchi, thank you for tuning in, have a good day.